Good evening, and welcome to St. Pete's Decides 2013. I am your moderator Frank Viafor, Dean of the College of Arts and Sciences of the University of South Florida, St. Petersburg. Tonight, we have a chance to hear from the City Council candidates from Districts Four, Six, and Eight. These are the districts with more than two candidates running for office. We are hosting the City Council's primary forum right here in the City Council chambers, where the candidates hope to serve. This forum, being brought to you live on St. Pete TV, is a little different than the other formats in the past. Here's how it will work. The format tonight has three main elements: the one-minute question-and-answer round, a 30-second wild card option, and the one-minute closing statement round. The candidates are grouped by district, from my left to right, District Four, Six, and Eight. They've been assigned a specific seat position within district by random selection. I will pose questions in district rotation so that candidates running against one another for district seats will each have an equal one-minute opportunity to respond to the same question before I move on to the next question for the next district. Questions for this candidate forum were solicited from students and employees from the University of South Florida, St. Petersburg, and also from audience members that checked in this evening. Each candidate will be provided with two 30-second wild cards. These cards can be raised at any time during the candidate forum by giving all candidates an opportunity to respond to a specific question of their choosing. Out of courtesy, I would ask that the wild cards be used only after all of the candidates in the initial responding district have finished their one-minute answers. Finally, about 50 minutes or so into the Q and A, I will stop and give each candidate one minute to offer his or her closing remarks. The order of closing remarks begins when predetermined by random draw. So let's meet the candidates by first and last name without titles. First, Carolyn Reeves, District Four. Darden Rice, District Four. David McHale, District Four. District Six, Carl Nurse. Trevor Mallory. Sharon Russ. And District Eight, Alex Dunson. Steve Galvin. And Amy Foster. Here's a little interesting fact about the Mayor's election I would like to share with you. For Section 5.105A of the City Charter, if a candidate for Mayor receives more than 50 percent of the votes cast in the primary, then that candidate shall be considered duly elected and shall not be required to be placed on the general election ballot. If no candidate for Mayor receives more than 50 percent of the vote in the primary election, then the two candidates for Mayor receiving the highest number of votes cast by the electors at large shall be declared the primary nominees and shall be entitled to have their names printed on the ballot and used in the general election. So with that, let's get right to the first question, beginning with District Four. The first question is about job creation philosophy. Job creation philosophy. As a guiding principle, are you one who is more likely to favor incentives that would bring in one large company that promises to bring 100 jobs to our community, or support 10 new small businesses that promises to bring 10 jobs each?
Firstly, I'm not a big fan of incentives myself because I don't believe that, from my experience, government doesn't do a good job of creating jobs in that way. Of the choice, however, I would prefer to diversify the money and invest in a larger number of small companies that would create a smaller number of jobs. Because again, very similar to an economic portfolio that you may have for retirement, you want to have diversification there. And if you invest in more smaller companies, you may be likely that one or two of those would become a big hit, as opposed to putting all your eggs in one basket and investing in a large company that may not stay around.
Hi, my name is Darden Rice, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you, USF. Thank you, the City of St. Pete, for holding this forum today. I do think that the number-one job of City Council is to work on our economy and strengthen jobs in St. Petersburg and in the region. And in that role, City Council members need to be strong advocates, knowledgeable advocates, who work closely with the CEOs in the city to know exactly what they need, how they're going to grow their bottom line, how are they going to build payroll, do they need to find or construct new buildings? You won't see me voting for tax breaks for big-box stores on 34th Street when they're going to come here anyway. It would be my preference to support 10 small businesses that would employ 10 employees each, and then the opportunity for helping those businesses to grow would be greater than perhaps putting all of our eggs in one basket of one business.
Well, thank you for hosting this event. And I am Dr. David McHale. I'm running for City Council. You can learn more about me at StPeteIsYours.com. I support a jobs-creation program based on the basic principle that people who create jobs should keep more of their own money. They should have a minimally regulated environment. This city has interfered with job rules, with regulations, like trying to stop sign-spinners on the corner, trying to stop electronic messaging centers sitting on the corner of a building's property, trying to make you hire who you're told to hire based on a committee like this sitting in the front of a room. Now, my opponent likes to say that she won't support tax breaks for big-box corporations, and yet, she wants to raise sales taxes $130 million to build a light rail, money that comes out of the pockets of the poor in the middle class that go in the pockets of the rich and well-connected, all so they can buy property to build rail stations. How can you trust a person who wants to soak the poor in the middle class and give it to a bunch of rich and well-connected people in the political class? You can't. Just why you should support me, Dr. David McHale, for running for City Council. Moving now to District Six. The question is related to historic preservation. How important is historic preservation in your vision of St. Pete? And under what circumstances might business development trump historic preservation?
St. Petersburg fortunately has a good number of buildings that have been restored that were historic buildings. In fact, one of the oldest buildings in town is an important building that I restored. You sometimes do have to balance that because occasionally, a building is in such bad shape it can't be saved. What we are working on right now is trying to bring up what Savannah is doing, where they're bringing a combination of historic tax credits and affordable housing tax credits, and they're using that to stimulate affordable housing in historic buildings. And so I think that it is important, but I don't see it as trumping business. In fact, if it's done right, it helps. It helps business grow.
Okay, I would like to thank everybody for coming out. I'm Charlie from Howard, running for District Six. The historical areas that I know of in St. Pete, one of them, I've had a sit-down with them at the Rosa Parks Association over there, and it's a beautiful place. As far as a big business coming in and trumping over that, I don't see that happening because, first of all, it's not a good area for commercial buildings. It's for commercial businesses in that area. It's exactly what it should be, a historical park, a historical park of St. Pete. And now, another concern I have in that area is that half of those homes over there are not half of them, but a lot of them are vacant. They're half-built, they're fenced up, and nobody even lives on that property. So that's not much of a historic area to me if we don't have residents living or citizens taking care of those areas within the community itself. So I'm for the whole historical thing, and I think we need to concentrate on that rather than thinking of something that can trump that.
My name is Sharon Foster, and I'm a candidate for District Six. I'm all for historic preservation. In fact, my district, you know, my district is very special when it comes to housing, affordable housing. When I was rocking my neighborhood in District Six, of course, historic preservation is very good, but when you have people who, most of their houses have tarp on them, you know, historic preservation, I kind of like put that on the back burner because I think we need to invest in housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, we shouldn't be government-regulated houses where people in the community have to pay based on what section in affordable housing pays. And I think we need to, when we talk about affordable housing now, we need to talk about it in the term of the average, median income, for the poor people who live in that neighborhood who need to pay a decent, have decent homes and be able to pay what they make according to their income. And affordable housing has really done a lot of damage. For those people that need it, that's fine, but I don't think people should have to live off of government housing for the rest of their lives. I think there should be some homeownership. I think a lot of the money that we invest in preservation should be in homeownership, the people living in decent houses where it's not raining, and so that's my perception of, you know, historic preservation.
Thank you very much for the wild card from Steve Galvin.
Historic preservation is very important to me. My first job when I moved to St. Petersburg was restoring an 85-year-old house that had sat neglected for many years, and I spent years turning it back into the beautiful house that it once was. I'm also a member of St. Pete Preservation, and I think it's important that we retain our historical landmarks. And as far as businesses' integration into historic buildings, I think this can be done in a way that maintains the historic integrity of the building, at least the facade of it, while still allowing the business to do what it needs to do to be successful.
I think it's important to realize that the needs of historic preservation and the needs of business are often not commensurate. And so sometimes, all that is required is a good deal of dialogue to find win-win situations where those who are interested in preserving are able to have their needs met and that the building's preserved, and that the businesses can also find some ways to make money and to be prosperous.
Alex Dunson also used a [inaudible]. The next question goes to District Eight, Alex Dunson. This question is related to Midtown District Development. How might the city continue its efforts to strengthen and support a vibrant Midtown district?
The, I think, one of the things that I'd like to see, one of my goals when elected will be to not only be here in City Hall, but to take a strong personal interest in what's going on in Midtown, to walk a beat down to Midtown and talk to people and find out what exactly their needs are. Currently, right now, in district, in my district, I've found a number of people who have disability needs that I call in the city to have those needs met. So I feel that having someone in City Hall who's going to take that extra step and actually be out there in Midtown to find out what their needs are, calling City Hall and making things happen here in City Council is exactly what I'm thinking.
Steve Galvin.
I think that Midtown development is very important. I'm excited about the prospect of Jabil, perhaps relocating all of their facilities into Midtown. Lewestream is moving here from Canada and setting up in the Midtown area. So I think we've got some good things happening in the Midtown area. I would like to encourage more. I think our CRAs will help in developing some new businesses via the tax credits, and that's it.
I'm in full support of the CRA and TIP that we're working on with Pinellas County, but in addition to that, I think it's really important that we take a holistic approach. It's not just about infrastructure, it's about other programs that help families, and so I'm also supportive of the Agenda 2020 Plan because you have the infrastructure that the city can help create in addition to community stakeholders and the work that can be done there. I also think it's really important that we help grow local businesses in Midtown. I'm also excited about some of the other businesses coming in, like Jabil and the USF location, as well as Sylvia's. Those can all be catalysts. We've seen that happen in Grand Central District. But again, small businesses that are owned by people living in that area will be really important as well.
We have a couple of wild cards here. I think Trevor had here the first one.
Okay, Midtown, I believe, is an easy fix. First of all, it was heard when the sweep day left. We just need a grocery store in Midtown. There's a lot of people over there that can't go grocery shopping because a lot of people also use public transportation. That is a poverty area over there. So if the funds aren't needed, people don't have the transportation to get out the way they can. Now, these other businesses that are coming in, am I excited about it? Yes, a little bit, but, like you said, they're coming from Canada. Once again, you're just going to suck all the money out of Midtown and that area, and it's not going to go back into the communities.
Any other wild cards? Carl Nurse.
I've spent a lot of time working on Midtown over the years. The first thing I did when I got into council was to get a foreclosure prevention counseling money going. That was four and a half years ago, and I didn't expect that we'd still be in this pickle. But I did lead the effort with Ken Wells to establish the CRA, which I think provides a pathway forward for that. I did get the foreclosure registry launched this year, and the program of rebates for rehabs in Midtown, if we do the work, will help them pay for that.
Sure. You know, I think this topic of question really should have helped us on District Six because this is the CRA. The important thing, I'm not in favor of the CRA, I'm not in favor of Agenda 2020 because when I read that, I thought, well, you know what? Who are the stakeholders? The stakeholders are the people in that community. We're all leaders, we don't need designated leaders. And I look back from 10 years ago, all the money that we invested in Midtown at that time, after the rockets, to improve the socioeconomic conditions in that area, and nothing has changed. So the statistics for the CRA is based on public statistics, and so I think, you know, we have to do better. I think you need to go to the community and ask the people what they want instead of designated leaders, and I think that's what's destroying our community.
Any others? Darden Rice.
Yes, thank you. I'm in District Four, Darden Rice, and I am on record as being in support of the TIP district's strategy to increase investment in Midtown ever since the idea was brought up a couple of years ago. I am also a very strong supporter of the goals of Agenda 2010 and beyond. And furthermore, in my role as a board member of PSTI, I am a strong supporter of mass transit and the referendum will mean a 65 percent increase in our bus service, and that means savings to families that don't have to buy a car or a second car. Thank you.
Thank you. We return back to District Four. This time, we'll begin with Darden Rice. Topic is Major League Baseball. How important is keeping the Rays in St. Petersburg to your overall vision of the city? How was understanding your position on how the mayor should dialogue with the Rays' owners going forward?
Well, I think it's certainly at the top of the list. I think we should do everything we can to keep the Rays in St. Petersburg. I don't support spending another dime for a stadium. I think that one of the biggest challenges is that we don't have corporate partnerships to help with attendance to the games. The city certainly plays a role in helping out with that, but, you know, we could wave a magic wand and clock a new stadium anywhere in the Tampa Bay area, and it's going to back into a mass transit question because the challenge is, how do we get people to events? How do we connect people in the region to attend the baseball games? I do think that the mayor has played a smart role so far in insisting that the Rays stick to their contract. St. Pete has not always been treated kindly by Major League Baseball, but I do think that we should do everything that we can to keep them here and keep them in our stadium. I'm intrigued by Councilmember Curtis's proposal, what I call the P to S trade proposal, because I think it would be interesting to see if the Rays actually do intend staying in this region if they want to move. Thank you.
David McHale.
Again, I'm Dr. David McHale, and you can learn more about my campaign at StPeteIsYours.com. The Rays can pay their own way. They're a wealthy New York corporation, and they don't need our subsidies anymore. It is time to stop putting 30,000 hours of police overtime to direct traffic when we could use half of those hours and put them on the street fighting crime. It is time to stop giving them $1.5 million in annual subsidies so they can take it home to New York. If we want a new stadium, they can pay it their own way, no more taxpayer dollars, and if they leave, God bless them. We can rebuild the site to a manufacturing, we can bring in new collar jobs and the like. Now, I've been saying this since 2006. I didn't see my opponents there. I've been here in front of City Council, I've been in front of City Hall, saying the Rays should not get our taxpayer money. I'm the kind of leader who stands up when it's inconvenient. I'm not the kind of leader that looks at a poll and decides what's safe to say during the middle of an election, unlike my opponent here, I have two opponents, really. So I see a better way for St. Pete. It's a way where the citizens keep more money in their pockets, and people who are corporations pay their own way. You can learn more about me at StPeteIsYours.com.
That's Karen Reeves, District Four. I forgot to say that last time. You know, I would love to be able to keep the Rays here in St. Pete. Recently, I was looking at, like, it may not be an issue for much longer because from what I'm hearing, the mayor is going to let them take a look over at Tampa. And if that happens, I'm very excited about the opportunities for redeveloping that area, in particular, if Jabil were to happen to move its headquarters downtown in that same area. What a lot of folks don't know is Jabil is actually one of, it's the top, it's the number three electronics manufacturing company in the whole world, with the other two being in other countries. So not only is it the number-one manufacturing area and the number-three in the world, but it's here in the States and it's here in St. Pete. So what we could do with Jabil and then build around that structure is very good. I also find it amusing that Darden somehow manages to bring rapid transit into everything she talks about. You know, I just, I'm not on the same page with her. I think there's a lot of stress associated with that. And also, as far as her talking to the CEOs, you know, one thing I would say is I don't have to talk to them because I've been a CEO, I have experience in those areas.
Moving on to District Six. You already answered the question.
We'll have a wild card on this issue. Does that work or not?
You already responded to the question.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to use a wild card for the same question?
Yes, I do.
Ruling immediately? You did not anticipate that.
That's fine.
Sorry, cannot do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, District Six. You get the Pierre Lynn's question. This goes first to Trevor Mallory. Do you support the proposed Lynn's project? And is a Pierre structure, whatever it ends up being, a high priority in your vision of St. Petersburg?
First of all, no. I do not support the Lynn. That means I'm hoping yes to stop it. Second of all, the inverted pyramid, the structure about, since the beginning, I've been saying that I believe in that structure because it's been there for many years and it has stood, it has stood through the times of the floodwater, the tornadoes, the hurricanes, everything that's come through here has not done anything to that structure. Now, what's the motive of tearing that structure down when it's proven? I'm not sure. It's definitely not worth $50 million to tear that down and to try to start over with something new that's not proven. Now, that's my opinion, but I would definitely like to just let the citizens vote on this issue because, one way or the other, you know, these are the ones that are going to visit it. So we need something that they're going to be happy with, something that they would love to revisit and bring their families back to revisit because if we're just going to have something that's just going to sit there empty like it is, you know, you put jobs out of business, you took away jobs, you closed down businesses, I just think it should have stayed open and just remodeled it for afterlife.
Well, I know that the lens issue has been a kind of divisive issue for the city, and I think, to me, it's important that, you know, it all has support, it's supported what we have right now. I don't believe that people should just start petitions and get paid to start petitions because they're set with who's going to get the contract. In my district, as far as I'm concerned, and a lot of the people I've talked to, of course, you know, are concerned about the lens, but in District Six, we have a lot more pressing problems, you know, than just the Lenz, and I'm quite sure Mr. Nurse is , you know, very involved with that. But, you know, I have to say before, it's grassroots there. We're only as strong as our weakest link. And in Midtown, we just need, as far as the CRA, we should put that on the ballot and decide, and let the people decide, okay, well, you know, we're going to invest this much money into this project, make sure that in 2010, we have some, we have some changes. We have schools that's performing, we have families that's intact. And I think Mr. Nurse, he's been on the council for six years, and I wonder sometimes, does he really get it? You know, you need grassroots, you need people who are in that community to be involved with everything that we're dealing with. Let's put the CRA on the ballot.
Carl Nurse.
Thank you. I should say that I did vote a dozen times in the last year to put the lens on the ballot. We never, we never got more than four votes on council, so it did not happen. I think the problem with the lens candidly is that when we designed it, or when the way the process worked, we sort of threw out all the functions. And I really do believe form follows function. If you compare that to the Dollar Museum, where they had a series of criteria that really were four requirements, first being hurricane category five hurricane building. And so when you, when you, when you start with one of the functions, make sure it fits that, then you do much better on form. And I should say that in three weeks, we will pass, finish passing the local high requirements. So whatever we pass after the lens is voted down, we will be able to provide an incentive for the contractors to hire locally, and the contractor will also pay for that.
Thank you. We have a wild card for District Six.
Yeah, Dr. McHale, at StPeteIsYours.com. I'm the only candidate running a district board that signed the petition to stop the lens. I'm the only candidate that spent years, it's a year and a half, asking the City Council members sitting up here not to build the lens. It had a big poster of a white elephant saying, please don't do this. I'm the only candidate who said, don't take out a $50 million loan that the taxpayers have to pay back. Instead, let's get a private developer to come in, make it publicly accessible, meet city requirements for look and feel, let them build it on their dime. Then they pay us taxes, and we don't give them subsidies anymore. That's leadership, and that's not what you're going to get from my opponents in this race.
You have a wild card from Darden Rice.
Yes, I prided myself on my ability to listen to all sides, and I came to the conclusion a long time ago that the people need to vote on this issue. And the reason why I did not sign the petition early is that I thought that people would no longer share their thoughts and opinions with me if I gave the appearance that I had already become rigid in my point of view. I don't support the lens. I've listened to a lot of people, I've talked to a lot of people in my district about this. I have a pretty good feeling about exactly where my district stands on this. Both sides have a lot to say, and although I don't like the process or the expense of the lens, I want to be open to what both sides have to say.
Thank you. We have a wild card. Steve Galvin.
I signed both petitions to get the lens on the ballot. I felt that the whole process by which we got to the lens was flawed. I don't believe that the lens offers the amenities that municipal peers should have, and I believe that the structure of the existing inverted pyramid and the caissons beneath it are sound with the replacement of the approach in the apron. I think that we can rehabilitate the existing pier for significantly less money. Thank you.
From the people that I've talked to, the people want to voice, the people want to vote, I would propose that from now on, that any landmark that's going to exceed a certain dollar value automatically be put on the ballot.
The next question goes to candidates for District Eight. And goes to Steve Galvin. Is there anything so valuable in the city that you might be willing to take a saying that we may need to increase taxes to support?
I would think some sort of a catastrophic event. I mean, if we were to be hit by a significant hurricane, I think we'd need to generate as much revenue as possible in order to rebuild from that.
Hi, I'm Amy Foster. You know, I think that it's really important, especially with our senior population, that we keep costs for the city as low as possible. However, if you think that job is easy, I know it isn't. I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets, and I can tell you it's hard when you have to make those decisions. I've heard from many residents who are concerned about their taxes being raised, but I've also heard from many residents who are concerned about having their public safety protected. That's the only issue I could ever see needing to raise taxes for. In my district, there are lots of concerns about drugs and motels and prostitution. People are losing home values, and so I think we need to make sure that we're able to increase our officer-to-resident ratio, and that's the one thing that I would find worth raising taxes for.
I believe a lot, even most, problems can be solved without raising taxes. I think before we even think about raising taxes, we should look to community initiatives, to innovation, to technology, to increasing efficiency, all long before we think about increasing the taxes. Could there be something catastrophic that could happen? I'm sure, but probably if it was to reach that level, there would probably be federal and state money available that we could go into first before raising the taxes. I mean, I would be very hesitant to do it. Taxes are life and death to a lot of people. If it had to be done, I would, but I would be, only under the greatest of circumstances.
Karen Nurse, would I choose a what?
As far as raising taxes, I read the, in our city, I don't think that taxes should be raised in this district because according to Agenda 2020 and the CRA, the millish types, to pay for this money, you know, since according to what I've read, is that they would raise the millish taxes for people in Midtown, the CRA area, in order to pay for, pay for some of the money that's being out there. So you have to increase So if you have to increase taxes in order to pay for a $3.3.9 billion incentive that we're going to get, I just don't think that, you know, it's worth raising taxes on people that can't afford it.
Another wild card, Carolyn Freeze.
Carolyn Freeze, you have to be really careful when you talk about raising or not raising taxes. What a lot of people don't pay attention to, and politicians are experts at working on this. You can reduce the millage rate year over year over year, but if property values continue to increase, the people's taxes will continue to go up. Yet you will have a politician that claims higher taxes every year. So people need to understand what it really means. And another thing is, you know, city expenses keep going up, maintenance operation costs, pension funds, health benefits. You know, over time, it's eventually going to increase anyway.
The next question, back to District Four. David McHale. This question is on experience. What specific skills are needed to be an effective member of city council? What evidence can you point to to demonstrate that you have these skills?
Well, the first thing you need, again, I'm Dr. David McHale at St. Pete is Yours, is a willingness that you're mainly here to serve the voters and the taxpayers who put you here. You're not here to serve a political class. I'm running because I want St. Pete for the citizens to be your city again. And right now, it's run by a small elite group. And Darden Rice is a charter member and leader of the political class with union leaders, big corporations and their cronies, extreme political special interest groups, and politicians and bureaucrats. And they think it's your job to pay for their grand visions that usually fail while they benefit. And they want you to keep your mouth shut while you do it. And you know, Darden puts out a thing saying she's got this promise for her public service. I challenge you to go look at my bio and go look at hers because while she was working with the Sierra Club to take out cheap incandescent light bulbs and replace them with toxic CFLs, I was working after 9/11 on dozens of committees to prepare this city for domestic terrorism. I was working with police and fire in the county. That's leadership. I challenge you to compare our records.
Thank you. Carolyn Freeze.
I think the number one thing that you have to have initially is to be a good listener and to be willing to go out there and talk to people. That is something that I have been told actually by my opponent David McHale, that I am a very good listener. Another issue is being able to build consensus. Over the years in my activities in PTA, my neighborhood association, and my businesses, I've been able to build consensus around type issues. Now, again, my opponent David McHale, somebody asked him once how he would work with the other city council members. And he said, I'd give him my opinion, I'd listen to what they had to say, and I'd give him my opinion again. That's not a way to build consensus. The third thing is problem-solving ability. I'm a mechanical engineer trained by Purdue University. At the time I was there, it was one of the top five engineering schools in the country. I've learned how to solve problems. Darden Rice's version of solving problems is restating the problem as the solution. She did this with curbside recycling. She stated up at the top that the problem is that St. Pete doesn't have curbside, but universal curbside. And the solution was universal curbside. That is not valid problem-solving methodology.
Darden Rice.
My name's Darden Rice, and you can find out more about me and my platform for St. Pete Strong at votedardenrice.com. I'm a strong leader. I bring the best set of leadership skills to this race. I'm proud of my leadership leading legal women voters for three years. I served the Charter Review Commission. I served on the Pinellas San Co's Transit Authority. I have the longest proven record of public service on issues most relevant to the city. And I think part of leadership means that you're also an authority on the subjects in which you're leading. And I've proven that I have this expertise on a number of subjects that come before the city. I find it interesting that someone would think I'm an elitist. I am the candidate in this race who's working to support our working families and the middle class. I know who I am, I know my roots. I come from a family of farmers, of teachers, of nurses, and even artists. And I will always support any kind of policy that supports our working family and our city workers.
We have a wild card. Amy Foster.
Hi, I'm Amy Foster. And the work I do every day is to bring people together to solve complex problems. I currently manage 41 states across the United States to do this. I think some of the skills that are really important for a council member includes being able to build consensus. You can't do that unless you're an active listener. Some of the other things that I think are important is being able to build public-private partnerships. And I've done that my entire career as well as writing federal grants.
Thank you. Moving now on to District Six. Karen Rice, it comes to you. The question is on leadership style. To what extent is compromise considered a good day in the office? And where does compromise sit in your leadership style?
Well, I think you have to be a well-rounded person in the arena of compromise. I think we should get caught into politics or our political preferences. As a candidate, I've worked and lived in District Six. Basically, I wasn't born there, but I raised my children there. And I think my style is knowing what, you know, being in that district and actually knowing what's the weakest link in your district and what you wanted to bring that district up. As far as Midtown, that has been something in our city for a long time that we need to address. And I think you have to be a grassroots person. You have to know those people, you have to feel what they feel. I don't think you could come in here with a bureaucracy because it takes a special grassroots effort in order to change the next generation that is, that is, are not getting a good education, the family structure that's not found. So I would bring, as far as compromising, I could work across any field. I work with Republicans, I work with Democrats. I know this is a nonpartisan thing. But I think we have to come in the middle and invite everybody in this whole city into building what we need to be and not nothing devices. And I think that's what's different with me. I can work with anybody across any.
You want me to reverse, some question on compromise.
I have fortunately on city council been able to pass candidly dozens of proposals over the years on everything from public safety to housing to jobs to, you know, things for kids. And frankly, most of the time, what ends up getting passed is different than when it starts. And in fact, the local hiring ordinance is a good illustration of that where we've got everybody together. And it's a different kind of ordinance than it started. Very seldom do you get everything you want. And sometimes, sometimes you get nothing. In fact, the first time I proposed that we televised city council debates, I couldn't get anybody on council to support that. Now, when I got on council, I was able to make that happen. But it's a long process. And you have to recognize that council members naturally are generous. And there will be staff members who live their whole life, you know, whether it's sanitation or whatever. And so you have to listen to people.
Thank you. Trevor Mallory.
Okay, I think compromise is very important. Just a little simple fact, you can't do everything by yourself. You know, when I'm in city council, I understand there's a team of, you know, eight, nine people that have to do this thing together. So of course, every day, you're going to have to compromise. I have a seven-year-old, I'm sorry, I have a 12-year-old, a six-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-month, two-month-old. So, and they're all girls. So I'm compromising every day. I wake up and there's compromising going on in my household, and it's nonstop. So, I mean, you have to be understandable. You have to listen and take it in and really sit down and come together as one and compromise on a lot of things. And if we can do that, man, St. Pete will be a beautiful place to live.
David McHale would like you to go.
Yeah, well, I want to emphasize that I have a long track record of finding common ground, working on difficult political issues and listening to local hiring ordinance. I worked at the Chamber of Commerce to make sure we had good compromise to protect businesses, but still met the needs of the agenda. I listen all the time to my patients. And we come together on complex issues and they get what they want. When I chaired the FMA, Florida Medical Association's task force on health system reform over two years, I've created a unanimous consensus. Now, the kind of consensus that politicians talk about is how they can all get together and hurt the voters.
Thank you. We are now moving on to District Four. Oh, a wild card. Sorry, Carolyn Freeze.
Carolyn Freeze, for me, compromise equals teamwork. And I've got a lot of experience, again, as an engineer. For 10 years, I've worked in the telecom industry designing motives and other telecommunications equipment. And we would release a new product to manufacturing core, and a lot of times, we'd go through a pilot process. Some of the best ideas for improving those designs came from the manufacturing workers. So it's very important to understand that other people have good ideas to offer. You're not always the smartest person in the room and the one that has all the answers.
Thank you. The last question is around District Eight. Amy Foster, this comes to you. The topic is finding efficiencies in the city budget. Virtually every city across America has been forced to do more with less in to create efficiencies in service delivery to stretch tax dollars. Do you believe there are more efficiencies to be found in this city's budget? If you have a second.
Absolutely. I think that our city council and mayor have done a really good job of trying to make sure that we're able to maintain services and find efficiencies. But I think there are more things that can be done. One of the first things I'd look for is increasing technology to encourage more efficiencies. When I worked for Girl Scouts, one of my jobs was business process improvement, so I have experience in this area. The other thing that I would look at is combining things that are redundancies. So things like six billing and collection departments, it's a similar function. Those are things that can go together. And then lastly, I would work to find energy efficiencies and other things that over time could drive down operating costs. Some of the things we're seeing that are already being done that is really exciting, like creating waste to energy plants and that kind of thing.
I would like to go. I speak to a lot of city workers as I go around canvassing. And a lot of them tell me that there is a great deal of efficiency in terms of purchasing in the way that work is done in the city. I would like to create a mechanism whereby feedback from the workers can be anonymously sent to supervisors and to the city so that we can find out which way we can better spend our money, where things are being inefficient. The other thing I would also like to look at is more energy efficiency. But also, I'd like to look at efficiencies that can be gained through volunteerism, through further use of our social capital, through partnerships with local organizations, through partnerships with individuals. There's a lot of people who really want to get involved and provide services and resources to the city, but oftentimes, they just don't know how to connect. I will be out there personally connecting people and organizations. And I'll be here trying to create infrastructure to make it easier for people to get involved.
Steve Gallo.
I believe in the recent years, the city's done a pretty good job of becoming more efficient by consolidating departments, not replacing people as they retire or term out. Another way we could become more efficient, however, is perhaps in some areas of the city, we could go to a four-day work week. Might make a more efficient use of people's time. It's a great way to save money in not having buildings open four or five days out of the week. So I think that we should look at a four-day work week for certain elements of the city. Thanks.
Wild card and comments.
I've worked over the years to candidly bring millions of dollars of efficiency to the city. It happened that I arrived on city council just as the economy was unraveling. So there was plenty of pressure to do that. The two things, the things we're working on right now is lobbying to get LED streetlights. Currently, we spend $5 million a year on LED streetlights. If we can convert to LEDs, we'll save a couple million a year. We just opened a health clinic, which we believe will save us at least a million dollars a year once we get something going, driving down our health insurance costs. So there's more to go. Thank you.
Last three questions. We'll go back again to District Four. Carolyn Freeze. And this question is on arts and culture in St. Petersburg. St. Petersburg is once again recognized as the leading art destination among East Side cities in America by American Style Magazine. Do you believe the city is going enough to nurture and support the arts, especially individual artists in the community? Please answer.
You know, it's a tough question because what can you do to help the arts? The arts is a business cluster just like any other business. It's actually listed by the Chamber of Commerce as one of the business clusters. Shy of, you know, setting up some type of an organization where you can have, you know, special housing or work-live type scenarios for the artists. There's really not a whole lot you can do other than what you can do for any other business. And that's essentially to set up an environment where businesses can be successful and aren't tampered by the government. You know, the government can't go out there and create good artists. It can't create artists that are, you know, going to have work that will sell. But it can set an environment where artists have opportunities, where artists are respected, where artists can expand their creativity and that sort of thing. So with any other industry, you know, I have experience in a number of these industries, firsthand experience from business. And so along those lines, you know, I'm the most qualified candidate from a business perspective, in spite of the fact that the chamber endorsed Darden.
Darden Rice, same question on arts and culture in St. Petersburg.
Well, I'm not an artist myself, but I was raised by one. My mom was a potter in Black Mountain, North Carolina. And I fully support the goals and dreams and hopes of the St. Pete Artist Alliance. I think the city could be doing a lot more to support the arts. When you have something that's an economic driver, it just makes sense that you invest in that. You don't cut it. My family, we have the season tickets to American Stage. We never miss a show at Free Fall Theater. St. Pete really does have a lot to offer. It has a lot to offer for the people that live here. It has a lot to offer for the discerning travelers who come here and look for things to do. So I strongly think that we need to make it a priority to keep supporting and nurturing our arts community. Thank you.
David McHale.
Yes, Dr. McHale. And of course, I support the arts, but I think the arts do better when they're independent. So I support the consultant that was hired by the city to help go towards independence for our artists. And here's the best way we can help our artists, who, many of whom are business owners. Let's cut their taxes, let's cut the regulations, let's make sure they can have signs in part of their businesses to promote their services that aren't banned by the city, as I've been fighting. And we need to think about focusing our money on the basics. All right, there's a vast difference between myself and Darden Rice. She wants to invest in the arts. That means raise taxes and spend money on projects because apparently a family member made some pots one day. I want to take the money and invest it in our police, in our fire, our roads, utilities, and parks. I want to take $80 million out of the reserve funds that are excess surplus reserves, mad money sitting there, and take $60 million and fund the $325 million pension plan hole that our police and firefighters face that will bankrupt this city and hurt our citizens. I will prioritize money there first.
Moving on now to District Six. Carl Nurse, this goes to you. And the question is on public schools. In your view, what is the role of city council, if any, with respect to addressing the myriad challenges facing our public schools, not the least of which is the achievement gap between minority and majority populations?
Well, obviously, we don't run the schools, but we do the role there. And sometimes, it's as small of a job as, last year, I was going to Melrose Elementary where I serve on the same. And I noticed that the kids were walking down the middle of the street between Jordan Park and Melrose. Well, there's a sidewalk there now. There wasn't a sidewalk. Candidly, I've been working in the, around the school trying to get houses renovated. And the most important thing we can do, frankly, is to try to work with the school system and juvenile welfare board to try to improve the quality of preschool services as well as providing a safe environment around the schools. Because if we can improve the preschools, we can go a long way. We also raise some money for the schools for scholarships, and I've contributed to that in education.
Trevor Mallory.
This is a really important question. Can you repeat that?
Of course I can. On public schools. In your view, what is the role of the city council, if any, with respect to addressing the myriad challenges facing our public schools, not the least of which is the achievement gap between minority and majority populations?
Okay, I mean, I don't know how you can be on city council and not focus on the failing schools that we have in St. Pete. Again, that's one of the effects of our economic development that we're trying to propose for the South Side. There are numerous amounts of schools on the South Side that are F schools. No developer or no company is going to move here and, you know, and place their families here in an education system that's not that good. So you definitely have to get out with the school boards. I mean, they're around here all the time. We have tons of schools. So as a city council member, you have to be in touch with the education of our youth. Mainly, I hate to say it, but it's the South Side. The South Side of St. Pete, it's a beautiful place to live, but there's, you know, the education. We have some good schools. You know, I don't want to say the wrong thing, you know, except our teachers. You know, we have great schools, but, you know, the numbers just don't show it. And we have to pay attention to that because that's the minority gap. Because it's in the poverty and the minority side of St. Pete. the poverty and the minority side of St. Pete, so you definitely have to take a look at that.
Sure. Well, the school is very, that's an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, because I'm a single mother, and I know what it took for me to pull myself up on my bootstraps living in District Six, and it took some real, some, some, actual, you know, put my beliefs where I got, where I needed to be. So, I educated my children, I educated myself, my son, we went to college at the same time, and believe me, it's not, it's not an easy job. So, I can, you know, as being, that's why I'm so adamant and so passionate about District Six, because I know what it took for me to get, and I know it's not easy. It's gonna take a citywide effort to come together nicely, sit down and think how we can take these kids out of Melrose, out of middle school. It happens before they even go to school. You can't expect for them to be at the same level where they don't get a good Head Start. The Head Start program is messed up, the juvenile welfare board, the schools where they allocate this money to, to Head Start, they don't even get a Head Start, and that's what Head Start is supposed to be, where you don't provide education, nutrition, parental involvement, these kids don't stand a chance. And when we have a school-to-prison pipeline, because these children are gonna go to prison...
We have a wild card here, thank you, Congress.
And unless we do something about this, we'll, you know, it's gonna continue to have a poverty cycle, and I refuse to allow us to keep getting money based on poverty statistics.
Education changes lives. It's the majority of what I've done in my career is workforce development and education. There are a couple of things that can be done here. I agree with a lot of what Carl recommended, partnering with our school boards, we can encourage corporate donations, we can also provide role models. If kids can't see, they can't be it. The other thing that's really important that closes that achievement gap is what happens out of school time. So, underperforming schools, fixing that is not the only answer, and that's really where we can help with our city's issues.
This is the final question, coming to District Eight. Alexandra Dunson, it comes to you. And title of this is "One Book, One City." Hundreds of cities across America have engaged in a common reading program where a single book is recommended as a starting point in a dialogue to bring the city residents closer together around a common cause, common issues. What book might you suggest if we were to advance a one-book, one-city program right here at St. Pete?
Wow. I, I, I think maybe not one, 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 one book, but I think generally the works of Shakespeare, the collected works of Shakespeare, there it is, the collected works of Shakespeare, because, I mean, Shakespeare shows a lot of the drama of warring parties, the, how reason can prevail. I think Shakespeare would also help to, in terms of education, getting people to read Shakespeare, I think we would become more eloquent, more, you know, just more prepared to deal with the world around us. Steve Galvin.
I think the book would probably be Rick Baker's book, "A Single City." I thought that was an incredibly good read, and especially for the city, it gives a tremendous amount of insight as to what's happened in our city over the last decade, and kind of set the foundation for a lot of things that have happened since he departed as mayor.
One book is a hard choice. The first thing that came to mind was a book by Reme Brown about the gifts of imperfection. You know, one of the things I see on city council is sometimes having some issues with everybody being able to bring their voice to the table in a respectful and civil way, and that's something I'd like us to do in every neighborhood and across everything, so I think I'd use that.
Okay. Yes, we have a wild card coming from Carol.
Yes, I don't know if this is a book or not, but it should have been a book, and it's based on the movie "Saving Private Ryan," because that movie, you know, the, they sent out a team to bring home a military guy who was the only brother left after the Elfrons had fallen to the military. So, in my wrapping around that, I'm saying that it's a battlefield where I live in South St. Pete, and I have four daughters that I'm raising in South St. Pete. So, you know, it's just rough to, day-to-day, you know, I wake up and I think about, you know, my area and where I live, and how, you know, pretty much unsafe it is, and I grew up in that area and I still feel unsafe, so that's rough over there for me, and that's my story.
We've now come to the point in the program where we have closing remarks. Each of the candidates pulled a number from, I had a few moments ago, and we'll begin with Carl Nurse with one, and a closing remark.
Thank you, Rick, everyone for listening. My name's Carl Nurse. You can go to my website at electcarlnerce.com to learn some more. I want to close talking about the most important issue, which is really public safety. You know, if the city's not safe, really, nothing else happens. I've passed several initiatives on that that were helpful. The first time that we increased the number of police officers in 2009, over, for about fifteen years, it was a proposal of mine, candidly, it was a fight. I led the effort to get our most dangerous housing complex sold and renovated, called Citrus Grove, as some of the worst murderers in the city came out of that neighborhood, unfortunately. I've worked to get security cameras in hotspots, sometimes over the aggression of some of the folks in the bureaucracy, and I've worked a good bit on our downtown late-night security problems, which are considerable. And so, if you give me a chance to keep working, I'll keep working on the important things, jobs, upper schools, police, and housing.
Alexandra Dunson. I'd like to change my book to "Drive," which is a book about how motivate, that which motivates the heart motivates best, and that's really why I'm in this race. I'm looking forward to the day that I can go knock on your doors, of your homes, of your churches, of your civic community organizations, and say, "Hi, I'm Alex Dunson, I'm your city councilman, and I'm here to help. What can I do?" I hope that together, we will work together to create the St. Petersburg that you deserve, that you want, at a cost we can all afford. Steve Galvin.
My name is Steve Galvin, I'm running for city council, District Eight. The only reason I'm running for city council is to take the positive impact that I've made in my neighborhood and build on that to try to improve the quality of life for everyone who lives in St. Petersburg, in part by making sure that we move forward with programs and ideas that make sense and are fiscally responsible and benefit the most citizens. I've invested money and my labor into our neighborhood by purchasing three of the distressed homes on our block and completely renovating them. Now, we have good families living there, and crime has moved out. I've been doing construction and modeling and remodeling for most of my life, and I feel that it's important to have someone with construction experience on council. Someone needs to know what a yard of concrete costs and even what a yard of concrete is. Also been involved with my neighborhood association for years and didn't just join when I decided to run for office. I volunteered doing fundraising for Gulf Coast Legal Services, work with lawyers for literacy, tutoring third graders who are at risk in reading. I signed both petitions to get the lens issue on the ballot, and I have thirty years' experience as a small business owner employing others. And I asked for your support on August 27th, and again on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Fries.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm Carolyn Fries, candidate for city council, District Four, where unlike my two opponents, I have lived on the same street for twenty-three years, raising my family and serving as a neighborhood leader. And I don't need to rely on talking to CEOs to find out what companies need, because I've been one. And if I do ask, at least I'll understand the answer, because I have direct experience in the key industries targeted for high wage job creation here in St. Petersburg. I've been living my platform by starting technology companies that create jobs and export products, volunteering in the public schools that my children attend, serving as president of my neighborhood association, and successfully managing the money at home, my businesses, and my volunteer activities. If I had to pick a book, it would be "The Fountainhead: We Need More Works and Less Ellsworth Tupees." My plan for St. Petersburg is simple: stop, look, listen, and lead. Stop the focus on politics, look for ways to improve, listen to what people have to say, and lead the city forward. I'm Carolyn Fries, a consensus builder by nature and a problem solver by training, and I hope to earn your vote.
Trevor Mallory.
Okay, I'd like to thank you guys for coming out today. One of the things I want to end this up with is as I go door-to-door in my community, or even in my district, you know, the rays, the leans, and this, the red light camera, which is a big topic in our district, in our city, does not come up in my community. My community, everybody's worried about community safety. It's a shame to know that, you know, where I live and raising my four daughters, that thirty percent of their friends will not even finish high school, and half of that will end up in the juvenile justice system. And that's not a good number, thirty percent, the only way you get good out of thirty percent is if you're a baseball player, because you can hit three hundred and make a million dollars a year. But thirty percent in real life, that's not a good number, and we have the, one of the highest rates of unemployment in the nation, you know, and that's not good. So, I'm Trevor Mallory, and I'm here to tell you that I have my fingers on the pulse of my community on South St. Pete, and if I am elected, there will be some changes over in my area, so vote for me August 27th. Trevor Mallory, thank you.
Thank you. Darden Rice.
Well, thank you, moderator, thank you, timekeepers, great forum tonight, and as the former president of the League for the Builder, having done this a lot, you guys did a really great job. I would also like to thank my family who's here tonight and the audience as well. Over the course of my life, I am proud of having the longest record of public service. I didn't come here tonight, I didn't come here running for this seat with talking points or attacks on my opponents, and that is the reason why in part I'm supported officially by the Chamber of Commerce, by our firefighters and our police. I care about St. Pete, and I'm personally vested in our community. I've lived here over twenty years, and I've been a homeowner almost as long. I understand the role of city council member, and I'm the most prepared candidate in District Four to meet those challenges. I'm the most prepared candidate on mass transit, connecting our communities and businesses, and I will fight for our working families, and I will get results. My lifelong values are public service, equity, accountability, courage, and engagement. I'm asking for your vote on August 27th. Thank you.
Amy Foster.
Thank you, and thank you for such a great organized forum. You know, I'm running for city council because I have the skills we need to meet our city's goals, and I'm not the only one who thinks so. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Times, eleven elected officials, and other groups. I've spent my life helping people and solving problems, and I won't stop now. I currently manage forty-one states, building public-private partnerships to encourage girls and women to pursue careers in science, technology, engineering, and math, and before that, I worked for the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida. You deserve someone who can stay focused on the issues that matter most to you, and that's what I built my platform on. Everyone needs to feel safe walking in their neighborhood, that'll be my top priority. Proud to be supported by the police, firefighters, and the realtors. We have to create jobs and jobs that work for you to support family. I'm proud to have both the AFL-CIO and the Chamber of Commerce endorsements, and we have to make sure our kids have the skills they need to succeed. Thank you. I'm Amy Foster, and I'm asking for your vote on August 27th.
Thank you. David McHale.
Well, thank you. I'm Dr. David McHale, and I'm a brain and spine surgeon, this is my hometown, I'm a small businessman, I'm a family man, married for twenty-two years, with three wonderful children, and I am the only candidate in District Four with the strongest record of public service, and I challenge you to compare the two. And what does St. Petersburg look like when it's your city? Not the city owned by a political class that have lined up behind my opponent, who are rich, well-connected, and have a special interest. Well, it's a city where you have a low cost of living, where your taxes go down, your utility bills go down. It's a city where we have more jobs, because we've attracted businesses who have free-market principles at work, not with the elite telling us what businesses we need to attract, as Fries referred to. It's a place where we have more freedom, it's a place where we get rid of red light cameras, as I've been fighting against, it's where we have government accountability, where I will search for common ground, but I will stand up for you first. You can trust me to work for you. And it's time for some new leadership here, not the same stuffed suits, supported by the elite in our city. If you want someone who's gonna fight for you and make it your city, vote Dr. David McHale for city council.
Last one. Sharon Rosen.
Okay, my name is Sharon Rosen, I'm a candidate for District Six. For District Six, I know that I'm the person that you need for that district, because I can't tell you something that didn't work for me. I'm a single mother, I raised my sons, I put myself to college, now my son is over at an urban school, he's giving back to his community, and that's the model that we need for District Six. We need to focus on how are we gonna bring that district up to, in reference to the rest of our city. We know that District Six, we have some unsafe areas, I'm sure, but generational poverty creates crime, you know, poverty is associated with crime. Unless you do something to stop the cycle of generational poverty, we can't have people living in Citrus Grove two or three generations, and they don't know nothing else about that. Of course, if that's all you know, you've been only accountable for it. My thing is, we get that next generation, we get these children, we give them a fighting chance, and we can do that as a community. City can get involved, we cannot keep getting money based on poverty statistics. These children are the future. It worked for me, and right now, I am in the process of opening a advocacy center, which will, nothing political, but which will educate women, train the family, and we can all get involved in this project and make our district a place in our city proud to be a part of the rest of the urban areas in the country.
At this point, I would like for the audience to please express our thanks for all the candidates coming in. So, if you'd like to watch this primary forum again in its entirety, you have several options. You can tune in to St. Pete TV for replays, you can go to the city's website at www.stp.org, or you can watch it on St. Pete TV on YouTube. In closing, I would like to thank our students, staff, and faculty, volunteers from the University of South Florida St. Petersburg, and the staff of the city of St. Petersburg for helping facilitate this terrific candidates forum. And finally, please be sure to join us here next Thursday, same time, August 15th, where the mayoral candidates will be having the same topic with Iowa. Thank you so much.